Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan schools. It's Monday, October 8th, 2018. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it's about time for the roll call. Ms. Crane?
Mr. DeWitt?
Present.
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mr. Lydiak?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Seven members present.
And I'd like to say welcome to all of us up here. It's nice to be at full force again. Welcome back, Mr. Lydiak from your adventures.
Thank you.
And I think we'll just be as exciting as drifting out over France.
It'll be, I'll be flying high here as well.
Brilliant. There you go. Well, under Board of Education President announcements, we usually focus on those three bylaws or trick words that the district kind of keeps on in mind as we move forward every day to meet the promises of our programs and services to our students. And one of those words is engage. And I think tonight we're going to be pointing specifically to a specific group of professionals in the district who really are the center of education. So that's our engagement point, and I'll let you stay tuned to see what group that is. Empower, I want to mention the MLO monies. Perhaps you've heard us mention that we are publicly spending the money that the public is giving us, brought to our schools that will permit the district to meet needs in new areas. And tonight, we're spending a good chunk of change out of that MLEV override to go right into classrooms and some very specific materials. And then the last item is a potential of a naming of an athletic field that could be inspirational. And I'll let you make the decision on that third word. At this point, we entertain the opportunity to listen to people from the public, hearing a person's desiring to speak before the board. A lot of rules involved in this. Rule one, just a couple of minutes, share what's on your mind. Let us know what's going on and what your concerns are. Don't expect an immediate response from the board because we'll have a person contact you, someone from the active side of the school district, to pursue any questions or concerns that you've raised tonight. And the first person who wishes to speak this evening is Natalie Mash, and the topic is associated with the Fred Chardis School of Innovation. And Natalie, you're a Greeley citizen, and we welcome you here. Please just step up to that microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Natalie Mash, and I have two children who attend the Fred Chardis School of Innovation. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to share my love of the school and some stories from some of the other parents that have been given to me. After there was an article in the paper a couple of weeks ago, mentioned the low test results from last year, a number of us had questions and were frankly quite surprised because every day we see the successes of our own children at Chardis. We feel that the article really failed to explain all the details and create an accurate picture to the community about how a small first-year school's test results might not indicate their overall predictor of future growth and achievement. So I fear the article did little more than to just cast doubt in the community. So we're here as your cheerleaders, the cheerleaders and champions of our school, and we'd just like to share with you our experiences. I hear positive things about schools from my friends and family, that everyone feels like their child is heard and seen and loved at the schools that they attend. And I really appreciate that there are so many different types of schools in Greeley. No matter what your kid is good at or interested in, there's a school that is really good at that, whether it's arts or science or technology. And I also appreciate the opportunity to have our kids learn with a different methodology. My, this mission statement of Chardis is that children are naturally curious and creative learners, and that they want to foster an atmosphere where risk-taking and curiosity are encouraged and students are empowered to become problem finders and problem solvers. And not only are my children both excited to go to school and come home telling me about the neat projects that they did, I really feel like they're taking it upon themselves. They have a level of autonomy and self-drive. My son this morning said he was going to fashion an experiment to figure out how many gallons of water he uses in the bathtub. And I said, "Is that a school project?" And he's like, "No, I'm just curious." And my daughter is actively interested in how she can become a professional mermaid. And she has been writing, you know, emails to professional tailmakers and the Greeley Aquarium, or the Denver Aquarium, to find out, like, how would she do that? And I was never doing that as a seventh grader. So if you would commit to reading some of these other comments by parents, they sent me with letters, people who couldn't be here. I have three copies. But the outpouring from parents was truly large after that article, so thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Mash, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're kind of singing to the choir, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. The next speaker on the same topic is Ms. Julie Probst. Welcome.
Thank you for your time. I'm Julie Probst. We're here for the same subject. I have been lucky enough to teach in four different schools in the district. I taught for 15 years. I also have four children, three of which are moving along in Greeley District Six. And my youngest is now a kindergartner at Fred Chardis. I, the reason why I'm here is just to encourage you to help Fred Chardis, especially particularly their staff, spread some positive publicity about their school. I feel like the one article was a very narrow in its scope of, you know, what it described. And as a teacher who taught right when No Child Left Behind came along, and, you know, I taught Billy Martinez for seven years, and we were under watch. And so I know how the bad publicity kind of builds on itself, along with, you know, test scores that don't seem to be accurate or seem to be portraying all of the amazing things that are going on. So I am just here to encourage you to help their staff and help us as parents spread positive publicity for them. It is by far the most amazing thing that I have seen happening in District Six. I'm just delighted and I'm so thankful that we found it. Our youngest comes home every day energized and excited about learning and engaged in a way that I can't even believe. And he's not the most sparkly member of our household. He's kind of a little crappy guy, but he comes home from school so jazzed up. So they got to be doing something amazing. So thank you for your time, and I would love to help in any way if you can direct us as parents as to what we can do to help spread that. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person interested in speaking about Fred Chardis again is Mr. Eric Parrish. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Eric Parrish, here once more to extol the virtues of Fred Chardis School of Innovation. My wife and I have one daughter. Her name is Shannon, and she's in third grade. We've both been residents of Greeley for a very long time. In fact, my wife was a teacher in the district for about 10 years. She taught at both Brentwood and Union Colony Preparatory School. And then in 2013, we moved to Tennessee. She got accepted to a doctoral program at Middle Tennessee State University. So we moved there, and my daughter started school, attended kindergarten and first grade in the school district there. We were in Williamson County, which is the richest, the most wealthy county in the state and, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the seventh most wealthy county in the country. So Williamson County had, the school system there has a lot of resources. They are extremely well-funded and very high-achieving district by any measure according to test scores. They have a lot of parental involvement and a lot of, a lot of times her school would receive nine out of 10 ratings from the good school or the great schools' rating system. But if I was given a choice between sending my daughter to the school she was at in Williamson County and sending her to TSOI, without a doubt, every time, I would choose TSOI. While she was in first grade there, I remember her coming, complaining regularly about going to school. She would, when I would ask her about the day, she would just recount the numbers of worksheets that she would have to do, and if she didn't finish them, that's what she would be doing in the evening. And if it wasn't worksheets, she would be, it seems like she would be working on preparing for some sort of test. So she would be learning, of course. She would, you know, they taught her, of course, reading, literacy, mathematics. It didn't seem like there was a whole lot of time for other subjects, including science or social and cultural studies or arts. So she was learning, but I can't by any means say that she was thriving. But all of that changed when we came back to Greeley last year. Since she started attending TSOI, I've seen her blossom. She has been engaged. She's developed a wide range of interests in many of the topics that TSOI has taught her. And she's eager to go to school. She's, the most important thing is she's cultivated a desire to learn. I personally feel that the school has challenged her and also helped her develop a sense of community with all the involvement that they have with many of the businesses and places that they go downtown. So I really, really want, part of the reason I'm here is to say thank you to the Board and to the administration for allowing a school like TSOI to become a fixture in the community. And I also wanted to say a public thank you to the school's staff and volunteers for the way they've been developing both my child and her classmates and allowing them to thrive. So thank you very much for your time.
Eric, thank you. Give Shannon a hug for us. The next presenter on Fred Chardis School of Innovation topic is Tamara Infante. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Infante and have a child who attends the School of Innovation. And because I think I'm the last in our group to speak, I'm going to edit a little bit because I don't think we need the redundancy. But because I serve on the School Accountability Committee, I know what the plan that was presented to you is. And although I don't think the tests accurately reflect the school's performance, nevertheless, I do think that the plan is only going to help the school, so it's a very supportive plan, not because there's improvements that need to be made because of an underperformance, but rather because it would help any school to do better. And what I'd like to share individually is Leo's story. Because Leo has had some challenges, and when he began school as a kindergarten, well, he began with the district in special education for preschool because of a severe speech delay. And through interventions and a lot of different things, he was growing, but something happened in kindergarten. There was a culmination of events where school became a very negative environment for him. And he became rather school-phobic. And we found ourselves in a position where we needed to remove him from school because the public school could not address his needs. And we homeschooled until this last year when the School of Innovation opened. And he went from being a kid who hated to learn to a kid that is now enjoying his environment, that feels safe, that trusts the adults. And Mr. DeWitt, you mentioned in the opening about the words engaged, empowered, being important to the district. Being a volunteer at the school, I feel really fortunate to see how things unfold, and our students are engaged and they're empowered in their education. And I think what's most important is probably what our kids would say about the school. So I asked Leo specifically what he would tell a roomful of adults, what they needed to know about his school. And this is exactly what he said, that I don't have to sit behind a stupid desk and do stupid worksheets. Thank you.
High five to Leo for us, will you? Okay, you're doing okay there. Thank you very much. On a different topic, this is Proposition 112, and Stephen Grant, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chairman, Board. I know that this is a political season, and as such, you're probably caught in the crossfire of various ideologies pushing for support or approval or disapproval. And I am here because I found out that this week, some of you were in a meeting that I was also in, and you were opting to not take a position as a board on Proposition 112, approve or deny. And quite frankly, I'm very concerned about that. And I'm concerned because of a couple of examples that it sets. First, it is said, I believe, by Oliver Wendell Holmes, that since life is action and passion, it is required of us that we participate in the action and passion of our times at risk to have been seen not to have lived. We have to choose a side because taking no side is a side. We have 600 families in Greeley that are directly impacted by Proposition 112, not because it creates setbacks, but because it creates unrealistic setbacks and it endangers families and jobs. There are another, perhaps 400 families from what we know in Evans that would be impacted by this. That's 1,000 families in this area. We have studies that show that 70% of the jobs that will be impacted after that are not even oil and gas-related if Proposition 112 passes. And that's a very dangerous thing. I really am glad for the productivity of District Six and the strides that we've been able to make and the children that are being helped and so forth. And I would encourage you to oppose 112 because of that. We've got a good working relationship with Noble Energy. They've given us buses. We've done things indirectly and behind-the-scenes, working together. The setbacks, you know, you've worked with the oil and gas industry in your work with Bell Romero and some of the drilling operations and so forth. And so I would encourage District Six to take a side because not to take a stand is to take a side, and I'm concerned about future implications for us with that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. The next item is the work session report. Ms. Crane, Executive Assistant to the Board of Education. I don't think I've ever thrown your hand out like that, so if you don't mind giving us a little review of what we just went through for the past couple hours.
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. The board discussed a draft plan of how additional funding could be spent if Amendment 73 is approved at the November election. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, Dr. Stacy Dattery, and Director of Instruction and English Language Development, Brian Lamos, provided an update on Salida del Sol Academy's assessment data. The District Six Board of Education and the Salida del Sol Academy Board and Staff discussed the data, and that concluded the work session.
That sounds familiar. Thank you very much. Dr. Pilch, dreaded October count has passed, and you have probably a few things to say besides that.
Yes, I do, President.
With your superintendent report, thank you.
Thank you very much. First, I want to honor and recognize Dr. Richard, who this past week was recognized with the award of the McGuffey Award, which is a prestigious award that school board members in Colorado may earn for their deep dedication and commitment to their work as a Board of Education member. So congratulations, Dr. Richard. Very well-deserved. Thank you for all your work. So I want to talk a little bit about teacher recruitment. I haven't had a chance to update you on some work we've been involved in that I'm pretty excited about. So we met just last week with a gentleman named Derek Gottlieb from UNC, who is working to design and build a new post-baccalaureate program for folks who have a bachelor's degree already but do not have a teacher's license. And so Ned Overton, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and I began working with him and brainstorming on what it might look like to bring some folks into our school district for their practicum and their student teaching and their experiences. And some of us might even get to teach a little bit and help to teach them, to prepare them to be teachers. So these would be typically folks who didn't choose education as their first career and now are thinking that they'd like to give back and do something a little more meaningful, perhaps, like be a classroom teacher. So we're excited about that, and we're actually hoping to be able to place 10 to 15 teachers next fall from this post-baccalaureate program into our schools, which should help us with teacher recruitment. We've also just started, just the very beginning, started a conversation with Teach for America and the Relay Teacher Program, which are both programs that can also bring additional teacher candidates into the school district. And I think you all know, last year, we started a conversation around the possibility of hiring international teachers and teachers on visas and things. So we'll continue to explore that as well, but what we know is there is a national teacher shortage, and we're going to have to do everything we can to recruit and prepare our own employment group here in District Six. And if Amendment 73 passes, we will also be able to build out our workforce readiness programming and our career and technical education programming to perhaps increase our number of students, whether still in our high schools, who are interested in choosing teaching as a career. So I wanted to let you all know what we've been up to there. I'm pretty excited about that work. Some of us attended the Great Education Colorado Luncheon last week. What a great event for us to go and support Great Education Colorado. Really a heartwarming event where the speakers who are being honored were being honored for their engagement as parents in their school communities. Really a beautiful honoring of those folks. And then the gentleman who received the top award there was being honored for his advocacy in the state, and particularly his advocacy for Hispanic students and advancing Hispanic students and promoting the number of Hispanic students who actually go on and complete college. So really a fun event. Thank you, Ms. Pappas, for attending with us, and glad we could be there to support Great Education Colorado. And then finally, as you all know, we just had a little brief, you know, flyby tonight that Mr. Lydiak will be joining the CASB board as they begin to look at their legislative resolutions and look at new legislation for this next year or legislation we'd like to undo that has already occurred and is being inflicted upon us. So I just want to remind you all that season is starting, and even as we look at policies tonight, many of these policies are a result of actions that our legislators took last year during their legislative session. And although there are probably all good things to do, they come to us without additional resources. These are what we call unfunded mandates, and we have some of them coming at us tonight as we approve some required policies that are a result of last year's legislative session. So Mr. Lydiak, I know you will remember.
We tried to help keep the legislators, you know, to hold harmless
Yes.
Public education. Still, it always comes, always happens.
I know, as you were advocating on behalf of District Six, you will continue to remember how committed this board is to local control and to less mandates and less rules coming our way. And just remind them what a great job we're doing. We don't need a bunch of laws for us to do the right work. We're doing a great job here in District Six.
And one of CASB's, the first standing resolution is that local control.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lydiak. So with that, Mr. DeWitt, I'm happy to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, let's move forward to approve this agenda. I'd be glad to accept a motion at this time to discuss the approval of the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Comments? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Brilliant. Next item is the consent agenda approval, and I'd be glad for a motion there so we can discuss that.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorize, excuse me, the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is a proclamation for Education Support Professionals Day. And it is an action that can be taken by the board, and I'd be glad to read the proclamation after we get a motion and second on our table.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six adopts the proclamation declaring November 14, 2018, Education Support Professionals Day.
Second.
Thank you both. This is a proclamation of the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six, Education Support Professionals Day, November 14, 2018. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process; and whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students; and whereas educational support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism; now therefore I, Roger DeWitt, serving as President of the Greeley-Evan School District Six Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 14, 2018, as National Education Support Professionals Day. And I urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools. I'd be glad to hear comments, questions. Nobody's standing to oppose this action. May we go ahead with a roll call, please?
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Lovely. And it may or may not have been this one, but we're early this year. Seems like a couple of times we've come in a little behind the line, and so it's great to be in advance of that deadline. The next proclamation and action is a National Principals Month, and it's timely. Let's just say that. Be glad to take a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six adopts the resolution declaring October as National Principals Month as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. I'll go ahead and read this, if you don't object. Proclamation of the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six, National Principals Month, October 2018. Whereas school leaders are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with our young people, our most valued resource; and whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collectively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements and set performance goals and objectives; and whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort; and whereas leadership is second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors that contribute to what students learn at school, according to research conducted by the Wallace Foundation; and whereas the celebration of National Principals Month honors elementary, middle-level, high school principals and recognizes the importance of school leadership, ensuring that every child has access to high-quality education; therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six does hereby declare October 2018 as National Principals Month. Comments? Additions? Opposition? I'm sensing it's time to do a roll call.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And those will be signed. Dr. Pilch, we've been doing spring cleaning now for several seasons, it feels like, but here we go with a whole bunch of new ones. This is the first read of policy GCHA, GCHB, Mentor, Teacher, Administrators. Am I looking to you for a little bit of a three-by-five card on this one?
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
So this is one of those policies I men- So this is one of those policies I mentioned that is a new policy required by our legislators and, or actually they didn't require the policy. The policy came down from Colorado School Boards Association as a result of legislative action. So it codifies much of what we already do around providing mentors for teachers and administrators. However, we, there is a compensation piece in here. It doesn't say what we have to compensate, but it says we should, which we currently do not have built into our plans. So we'll be looking at that over the next several months as we build next year's budget, as there's a requirement in here to, it actually says you'll pay what the district has agreed upon, so right now we've agreed to pay nothing. So we're not in violation of policy. But I think that the implication is that they would expect that we are paying mentors, which we should, if we have the resources to do so, we should. So this is the policy that outlines our responsibilities around mentoring teachers and administrators and will also require us to make sure we have a thorough process for evaluating our mentor program in the district. First read, so no action tonight on that policy.
A word or two from board members on this particular item. I feel like mentioning that the mentor shall be responsible for long-term orientation of the mentee as the individual prepares for professional licensure. The mentor shall maintain a log of contact time and activities completed by the mentor and mentee as part of the induction plan. This is big work.
Yes.
And it's, of course, self-serving because it's to our district's benefit, but when we select these folks, they really have to be our best, and we're already asking a lot of our best. So I'd be interested in seeing how we can come up and really support this in a meaningful way that'll attract those good teachers to be mentors. Dr. Richard?
So another piece of this that I like as well is that it states explicitly that the mentor, that the assistance provided through a mentor shall not be part of the district's formal evaluation system, so that it creates that nonjudgmental, helpful situation.
And that's our current practice.
Right, but I like that it's in policy there. And then also that the staff development program will be available for mentors as well. Those are needed and appropriate.
Well, you've got an enthusiastic audience on this one, and so we'll look forward to the next read. The next item is the Professional Staff Induction Program, and it's our first read, policy GCHC. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So again, this policy is a new policy required by law. Again, it's a first read. Both of these policies are a result of, I believe, the state of Colorado trying to put into place some pieces to ensure greater teacher recruitment and retention in school districts. So both of these are intended to help address shortages in teachers in the state of Colorado. This policy is, really codifies most of what we already do around induction because we're a larger district. We have a pretty robust induction program, and Dr. Dattery and her team actually just revised, reviewed and revised the program this past year, but we'll continue to make sure we're in line with policy. I do notice that we have one, if you drop down to the third paragraph from the bottom, we do need to clean up that line, that we should say "the district delivering the induction program" in that line.
Okay.
And we'll fix that before we bring it back to you next meeting.
We all saw that. We just let you remind us about that. Thank you for that. Hey, let's turn the page. I may be on the right one. First read of policy KDBA, Parent Notification of Employee Criminal Charges. This is an informational item.
Again, it's a first read, Mr. DeWitt, and a new policy that has come down as a result of new legislative action. And the intent behind this is to ensure that if a staff member is charged, and you see in the specific areas there of specific criminal offenses, that parents of children with whom that staff member might have worked have been notified of that. And so it puts in a policy some requirements on our part, again, requirements that are unfunded, but certainly understandable. And it's been a question, I think, in districts for a long time on how much do you share? How much do we have to protect the employee? This makes it very clear that we notify families of children who might have been in contact with that employee during that time in which the incident had occurred. And so it's a first read. Legal has had their eyes and their hands on this to adjust it in such a way that it meets the letter of the law as well as makes it reasonable that it's work that we can do here in District Six.
And so that means we wouldn't be harming ourselves by following the letter of the law, by providing this information? We wouldn't be facing a litigation as a result of informing our community?
Right. It's our, you know, according to the policy, it's our duty to inform families if we have an employee who is charged with one of those listed criminal offenses, and you can certainly understand why.
Dr. Richard?
I'm just curious about when it defines the employee, that it's a currently employed by the district or formally employed by the district at any time within 12 months
Yes.
prior to the person being charged with a specific criminal offense.
Right.
And so if this is someone that we perhaps let go in June?
Right.
And how does that work? Does this cross state boundaries?
Well, it's, yes, it's really when you become aware. So there's some protection in here that if you did not become aware, because it's, you know, we didn't get notification, then there's some protection. But it's, once you become aware, we have the two days in which to notify families. And, you know, fortunately for us, with Mr. Gates and the work that he does with agencies, not only here in our community, but neighboring agencies, we do get information as necessary. Also, we can be notified by Colorado Bureau of Investigation through the CBI, and we get those notifications if an employee has been charged with any crime. And then if it's one of those crimes that falls under Number Four on the previous page, then we would notify parents. Yeah, I mean, we did some handbringing over this, like who do we notify? How many do we notify? And we'll probably err on the side of caution, not probably, we will. We'll over-notify rather than take the chance of under-notifying. So if we're working with, say that it's a teacher who was also a coach, we're going to notify students who had that teacher and students who were coached or might have been coached by that teacher, those families.
All righty. It seems challenging when maybe an employee has.
It is.
On.
Yep. It is challenging.
But the fact that only if we're, when we are notified, that that's, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next item is Revisions to Policy ADD, Safe Schools. And this is an action item, so I'd be glad to hear a motion before we begin.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves the revision to Policy ADD, Safe Schools, as presented. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So this policy tracks with the previous policy you just did the first read on. This changes our safe schools policy to include the language that we must have a procedure for notifying parents of an employee's criminal charges when such notification is required by state law.
Seems smart. Comments? We're going to probably move on with a roll call, please, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is Revisions to G Personnel Policies, and there's a bundle of them. Dr. Pilch, we're going to go ahead and get a motion on acting on this, but maybe you can just highlight what this package of G is. Motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves the revisions to policies GBEB, Staff Conduct and Responsibilities, GBGA, Staff Health, GBGE, Staff Maternity, Paternity, Parental Leave, GBK, Staff Concerns, Complaints, Grievances, and GDE, GDF, Classified Staff Recruiting, Hiring as Presented.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, all three. Dr. Pilch? There's a lot going on.
There is. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So this would be part of the housekeeping that you mentioned earlier. Really subtle changes in these policies, but does get us in line with recommendations from the Colorado School Boards Association and really brings us up to speed to where we should be with these personnel policies. Again, you'll see one of the policies tracks with the previous policies around parent notification. The policies around maternity leave really are, and the one on medical examinations really are best practice now in the state of Colorado, and we need to get in line with that. And then I think, and then the final one was just a matter of removing a few words that were not necessary in the policy any longer around when we collect fingerprints, we don't also have to have a notarized statement.
Well, that's a reduction in need. That's great. Comments or concerns? Anything else board members need to hear? Let's try a roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, which is on the bottom of my previous page, is the second read of adoption of Policy IHBD, Equivalence of Services, specifically in Title I. It is an action item. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six adopts Policy IHBD, Equivalence of Services, Title I as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. This is the second read, and this is the policy around Title I that is a result of the new Every Student Succeeds Act from our federal legislature.
We've had a chance, by the way, to look through all of these items. Are there any lingering questions anybody has about this particular one? Seeing no concern or question, roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is an information item, but it's full of good information for us. It's the Innovation 2020 Update, Student Learning and Achievement in the Area Priority One, Personalized Learning. This is a chance to take a look at our blending, blended learning update. Dr. Pilch, it's in your bailiwick.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So in our ongoing effort to keep you well-informed about our work with our Innovation 2020, our strategic plan, and our progress in our district goals and our measurements related to those goals, we bring you tonight Dr. Stacy Dattery and Mr. Dagan Andrews to update you on student learning and achievement priority one, formerly known as the Blended Learning Update that you all used to get.
Right.
So, Dr. Dattery, it's yours. Take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch. Good evening, President DeWitt and members of the board. We are pleased to share with you an update on providing personalized learning experiences for all of our students as we continue to refine and implement blended learning in our district. All right. So our strategic plan, Innovation 2020, sets our mission and our vision for our district. Our mission states clearly that we provide every student with a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education in a safe, caring environment. We do this through our vision of educating today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And as we review our value statements in relation to our update tonight, two values most tightly align. And first, we know that every child can achieve, and additionally, that we provide opportunity and choice. Both of these values are critical to the priority update that we share with you this And while all four of these goals are a part of our strategic plan and are all important to the work that we do in District Six and Two, the work of personalized learning, the goal of student learning and achievement is our focus this evening. This goal states that students will engage in challenging personalized, well-rounded education, preparing every student to be college and career-ready with the skills needed to be successful in the community and the world. And within that goal, there are four priorities. Tonight, as Dr. Pilch shared, we will focus on priority one, provide a personalized learning experience for all students. There are two outcomes or goals that we will achieve through the implementation of the action steps that are within this priority area. First, by 2023, 95% of students in grades two through 12 will have a district-approved personalized learning plan. And second, by 2023, 75% of classrooms will be proficient in their implementation of blended learning. The remainder of this presentation tonight will share how we are working toward these goals, the accomplishments thus far, and the next steps that we are taking to support our educators and students in our district. And I will turn it over to Mr. Dagan Andrews to share some of that update with you.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I'm excited to have the opportunity to share an update in how are we providing personalized learning experiences for all students. To begin, I want to share an excerpt from the Greeley West Schools newspaper, The West Word. In an article titled, "New Technology Has Already Led to Growth," when asked about technology, integration in our classes, Junior Ellie Ness said, "Compared to last year, we are using technology a lot more." I have been using it a lot in my Algebra II and AP Lang class. In the article, students also expressed how computers have led to more efficiency and how they are doing more coursework with more efficiency. As a result of the dollars we receive from the passage of the MLO, we are able to purchase new devices and curricular materials to support blended learning at our high schools in secondary mathematics, English Language Arts, and world languages. And through the support of the Success Foundation, we've added two elementary schools, our final two elementary schools, Dos Rios and Maplewood. This means that after six years of planning, adjusting, and learning shoulder to shoulder with our teachers and building leaders, we have implemented blended learning in all 25 of our schools. Thank you. The next couple of slides will provide a basic overview of the student experience in blended classrooms. This graphic provides a basic approach to blended learning, with students working in small group instruction with their teacher, independent learning time on their computers, and then working in collaborative activities with their peers. Although students typically have their favorite part of the blended experience, it's really this dynamic environment of all three of these components that truly engages students in their learning. In some classrooms, we are also seeing teachers break from just three stations and thinking about four and five and six stations to really think about students' needs and how they can best support their learning. To further illustrate the previous graphic, I'll share a few pictures from our classrooms. This picture in front of you are students from Dos Rios Elementary working in collaborative groups. In this photo from Prairie Heights, you can see small group instruction on the left portion of the screen, and another small group on the right working on summarizing text while other students are engaged in doing research. This is a geometry class at West High School, using computer animations to support their understanding of calculating the volume of irregular polygons. Students at Dos Rios are appreciating the time with their teacher during targeted small group instruction in this photo. In our last photo is another group from Prairie Heights receiving small group instruction while other students are busy during self-directed learning time. These are just a few examples from both secondary and elementary classrooms that provide a glimpse into what students experience in our blended classrooms. One of the critical pieces to blended learning is providing students opportunities to move forward with their learning at their own pace and ensure learning is happening for all through a more personalized approach. To make personalized learning a reality, it's critical for students to have access to learning targets they can understand. This clarity positions students to take ownership of their learning and move on to the next topic when they are ready. Having accessible learning targets also provides parents with what they need to work in and even closer partnership in supporting their students to move forward with their learning. To begin implementation of providing clear and accessible learning targets, we have partnered with Marzano Research. They have worked with our educators to provide the confidence that the learning targets are precisely aligned to the academic standards and break down the discrete targets that students must learn in order to demonstrate mastery. Our Phase One implementation has included three schools, Bella Romero K-8 Academy, Scott Elementary, and North Ridge High School. Elementary, and Northridge High School. Providing this clarity on what students should know and be able to do provides them with more ownership over their learning, and combined with our blended models of instruction, we will continue to deepen our implementation of personalized learning. It's my honor to highlight the success of our schools and demonstrate how our principals and teachers are also continuing to lead the way for other schools and districts. This year, we've had visitors from as far away as Alaska, Maine, Michigan, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, California, and Idaho to learn from our roadmap to district-wide implementation. Our journey has also been captured in a book called Pathway to Personalization, a framework for school change that will be released on October 23 to support other districts who are interested in implementing more personalized environments through blended models of instruction. I'd also like to share with you our progress on our Innovation 2020 goals. I'm happy to share that 81% of our students have personalized learning plans. This includes plans of IEPs, advanced learning plans, REED plans, and Summit Platform plans in both Franklin and Prairie Heights. In addition, in assessing how many of our classrooms are implementing blended learning with proficiency, we have 25% of classrooms that are proficient. Meeting the expectation of proficient and blended classrooms is a high bar to achieve. And based upon the results of our blended learning study conducted in collaboration with the University of Northern Colorado, we found that even with low proficient levels of implementation, we still see a positive impact on student learning. While 81% of our students have personalized learning plans, we are working to ensure all students have a plan in place and that these plans drive the day-to-day learning experiences for students. Our work ahead includes refining these plans to make them even more powerful for students and teachers. We will also identify through site readiness assessments the Phase Two groups of schools that will be implementing learning targets to drive student learning for the next school year. And finally, as we continue to deepen our blended learning implementations, we will host our third annual Blended Learning Summit on October 29 to support more of our classrooms to become proficient and provide personalized learning experiences for all students. This has been a long journey to implementing blended learning in all 25 of our schools. It has taken us six years to get to this point, and we know that in order to fulfill our mission of providing a personalized learning experience for every student, that we will need to continue to refine our implementations. As always, I will conclude by saying, after six years, it still feels like we're just getting started. Thank you for your time this evening, and as we've shared with you an update on student learning and achievement and our Priority One. Thank you.
And as he wraps up, before we, I open it up to you all, I would just like to take one quick minute to say, sorry, I'm trying to get back to it, the pathways to personalization. He's quite humble in not sharing with you, I suppose, that he has a pretty significant footprint in the publication of this book, and they called him, and I'm not sure how many pages have the work of what's happened in District Six and through the leadership of Dagan, but I just want you to know that we have an exceptional leader in Dagan. It is noticed. We continue to enjoy the work together here in District Six, but it was really neat that they called him and wanted to hear about the work that is happening district-wide. And I would say furthermore, for those of you that have, obviously all of you, been on this board and some of you longer than even others, the fact that you have hung with us these six years and continue to say yes and support this work and help us to do what's necessary in the way of, really, your footprint is also in this, Pathways to Personalization. So, thank you. I want to be able to just share a little bit more about that. Thanks.
I like that.
So, thank you for sharing that, Stacy. It's not surprising at all that he's a major part of this, so thank you for all the hard work that you've done. It has definitely been a learning process, and to be able to share that with other districts, that's so huge. And in these situations, I find that I always need to talk about our partner, and that's the Success Foundation, and their whole goal of making sure that we got, you know, laptops and stuff in our schools, and their continued effort in that, and the major support that we've had in our, in our community to support that work, not only through the district, but also through the Success Foundation. And they just keep working and working and doing better, just like everyone else has in this community. It's just such a great partnership and great work to see and witness. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
Dagan, I just wanted to say thank you. As a parent, I imagine you don't get to always see the kids that you impact and the lives of families that you impact, and so I just wanted to say thank you. It's been, blended learning's been huge in my kids' development, and being able for them to be able to do math at their level, and to have great teachers that can leverage this plan and these tools, it's been incredible for us, and so I just wanted to say thanks.
That's great to hear. Okay, you'll have to take that praise with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch.
Well, the next item is the naming of the athletic field at Greeley West High School. And before I open up to comments from board members over the details, Dr. Pilch, do you want to grab the start of this?
You betcha. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So, I don't think we've done one of these since I've been superintendent, but we have a recommendation coming from Greeley West High School staff and parent and student community to name the new synthetic turf field there. Just a reminder, this field is a result of the City of Greeley, quality of life tax dollars that were collected, and we, as a result, had a significant renovation of this field. And Mr. Cranston, Principal Cranston is here to walk us through how they got here and their, a little bit about their recommendation.
And before you start, Cranston, I'm going to go ahead and get us at a voting spot here. I'd be glad to accept a motion at this time. We all turned the page, it's my fault, I'm sorry.
I move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves the naming of the athletic field of Greeley West High School, Rocky Field, as presented. Second.
Thank you both. You'll go Rogie Field?
Rogie.
Okay. And I think now there would probably be a good moment for you to take on, Mr. Cranston. Thank you.
Thank you, President DeWitt and Board of Education, Dr. Pilch. I'm Jeff Cranston, principal at Greeley West. I'm here as representative of the Greeley West community tonight. Like Dr. Pilch said, we're blessed at Greeley West to have a great new sports complex, and our booster club and our community, including our athletic coaches, have been fundraising to purchase a scoreboard for this complex to allow us to do soccer games, football games, and track meets at the, at the field. And purchasing, or in this process of trying to purchase a scoreboard, it became apparent to, we needed to name the field to differentiate from other fields on our campus and other fields that we use off of our campus. And so, we had two different screening committees that we used. One was our booster club consisting of parents, alumni, coaches, and then also just our monthly coaches meetings where we have head and assistant coaches talk, and throughout some brainstorming sessions to see who, what we could name the field, and the name that continually rose to the top was the Rogie family. The Rogie family has had three generations of family members serve Greeley West High School, beginning with Ron Rogie, who was a teacher and coach at Greeley Central in the district for eight years before going to Greeley West, and he was a principal at Greeley West from 1977 to 1985, eight years. Following that, his daughter Jana was an assistant principal for four years and a principal for three years at Greeley West from 1998 and 2005. Ron's son, Mark, and Jana's sister was a coach and an educator at Greeley Central for over a decade before coming over to Greeley West and being a teacher and a coach there. So, he spent over 30 years in the school district, 18 at Greeley West, where he was a football coach and a track coach. And then Mark's son, Tyler Rogie, was a paid coach for our football team for two seasons before he tragically passed away in 2012. And so, again, as a representative of our booster club and our coaching staffs, we'd ask you to approve the field name Rogie Field at Greeley West High School.
Thank you very much. We're all taking a deep breath here. I think, Mr. Hayfley, you have a first comment to make about this.
In Greeley, when you mention the names of Farr, Monfort, Winnegrad, and Toynton, they're iconic names that, that make our community great. And when you think of District Six, the Rogie name is unmatched, and I've known all four of those people very, very well during the course of my experiences in Greeley. And for Mark, it could be wins and losses. For Jana, it could be scores. For Mr., he was Mr. Rogie to me. He was being scared to death of doing the wrong thing when he was around, and Tyler was a wonderful student athlete in person. Each one of them has touched thousands and pon thousands of students. When I am with them and somebody comes up and speaks to each of them, they have this smile like, "Thank you for making a difference." It would be an incredible decision on our part not to make this the Rogie Field because it's very, very deserving for each one of those family members in Greeley West High School. Go Spartans.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from board members at this point? I just have to kind of put out a little dampening spirit about Ron Rogie, and poor guy, he hired me. So, he's a human, but I think we can overlook that and possibly go ahead and put this to a roll call, please.
Mr. DeWitt.
Hi.
Mr. Hayfley.
Hi.
Mr. Lydiak.
Hi.
Mr. Matthews.
Hi.
Ms. Pappas.
Hi.
Dr. Richard.
Hi.
Mrs. Solis.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
That's dandy. Well, this is also dandy. Let's take a look at the Mill Levy Override Technology Purchase, and this is a chance to spend something like real money for us, and it's only possible through the voters of Evans and Greeley. So, Dr. Pilch, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. And this is a decision item for you all tonight. You know, sometimes we put purchases in the consent agenda, but Mr. Henson and I wanted to take an opportunity this evening, not only to celebrate that because of our Mill Levy Override and our generous voters, we have had a big impact on technology in the district and will continue to do so, and we thought we'd give you a little goal update here, also tied to the personalization goal that you just heard from Dr. Dattery and Mr. Andrews about. And, Mr. Henson, I think you'll want to take a motion first, Mr. DeWitt.
Either way, I'm ready to go either direction. Okay, we'll go ahead and do it by my book, which I skip a lot of the time. So, I'd be glad to have somebody else bring a motion to the table or to the room, and then we'll move it on.
Well, I would like to move that, oh.
No, it works. It works.
You do what it wants.
Go ahead. I would like to move that the Board of Education of Wall County School District Six approves the MLO technology purchase as presented.
Second.
I love the chorus of seconds. You're going with the crowd here. Let's go ahead, if you don't mind, please, with your presentation. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, President DeWitt, and members of the Board of Education. I'm happy to speak in front of you for the first time this summer about our MLO technology refresh, and more importantly, this is going to sound, and piggyback off the presentation that Stacy and Dagan gave to you, but I think it really shows the support of IT, support services, and our financial department on really supporting the instruction and the instructional model in the district. And so, you've seen the mission and vision again. District Six provides every student with a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education in a safe, caring environment, along with our vision, and this technology rollout is very much about personalized education, of which you heard in the previous Regarding our values, we commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement, and also provide opportunity and choice. And as you heard in the blended learning presentation, that the more technology that we can put in kids, we not only give our teachers choice in how they instruct, but we also give our students choice of how they learn. And so, this is within the goal of student learning and achievement, and I know you've read that before, but I really think what this goal is about is about leveling playing field and providing all students access to digital content or learning. And what gets me excited when we have boxes of computers and Chromebooks sitting in the back of our building and we're taking them out to places is that really this is about equal access from building to building in Greeley, let alone Greeley to global. And so, really, I think we're going to see big strides in learning, as Stacy and Dagan mentioned, as our students and teachers get more and more technology. Priority One is what our purchasing plan is under, provide a personalized learning experience for all students. And the objective here looks kind of bland. It's one bullet, replace technology devices at schools to implement a five-year replacement cycle, but I want you to think about it. We're on the beginning of that objective, and at the end is more. And so, I know we're all very appreciative for our community supporting the MLO, and within this cycle, we're just beginning the cycle, and what I'm going to show you is what we've done in Phase One of the technology rollout, what our plan is for Phase Two. There'll be more, and then we'll be back at this again in five years, which is exciting. So, Phase One was basically completed this summer. The two largest high schools were tackled first, Greeley Central and Greeley West, and MLO funding was used to replace existing classroom and student and teacher devices. We had, that consists primarily of almost 400 teacher devices. That picture is of a teacher at Greeley Central, and that is a standard teaching device. And if you saw some of the equipment last year they were using, waiting 15 minutes for things to log on, and then having a nice monitor and a laptop like this really helped actually make teachers a lot more efficient in the classroom. And also, about 1,626 student devices were replaced in those two buildings. Also, so in addition to those devices, as part of the curriculum adoption, additional devices were purchased to support personalized learning, which Dagan and Stacy talked about. In each of the ELA and math classrooms at all three high schools, this includes Northridge, each math and ELA classroom received 30 to 40 Chromebooks to support instruction. So, that is another, that is another 1,900 Chromebooks that were put into the high school. So, you know, for the last few years, here's a ratio for you. The 1.9 students to one device was kind of before the summer, but I would say if you went back three to four years ago, that number would have been probably more like three or four, I don't know, maybe higher, students per device. And so, what was mentioned about the Success Foundation, principals using their building budgets to buy devices when they could, and other grants adding devices into the pool, that number has started to decline and come to a ratio now with the addition of the curriculum Chromebooks that at the high schools were almost at a one-to-one student-to-device ratio. And so, that's pretty exciting, and that includes labs, that includes specialized labs, for example, STEM labs which need specialized equipment for students to use, and also supports blended learning that was talked about earlier. Phase Two is beginning right now, and the motion that's in front of you right now is for the purchase of devices for teachers and students. In Northridge, we'll finish out the MLO spending at Northridge, add Heath Middle School, and then Madison, Monfort, and Shawshank Elementary Schools. And our budget is approximately $1.25 million for that. In front of you is a PO for about $1 million, which will cover the, most of the teacher and student devices, and with the remaining to be used on other equipment that's necessary for the implementation. And so, our orders are going to be processed hopefully soon, and our deployment here, we're really looking at December and January of getting into classrooms and do those exchanges. And thank you for that. Are there any questions?
It's exciting. It's exciting.
We've had a chance to drool over the details. Anybody have a comment or a question? Obviously, we're sold on this business and the generosity of the voters, we have to thank.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
It's only one bulleted item. It's a big bullet.
I'm sorry?
It's a big, while it's only one bulleted item, it's a big one.
It's a big one.
To replace technology every five years, so.
Well, we've never replaced technology.
I was expecting to see a floppy drive on that older teacher computer.
Ms. Solis has a comment.
So, you know, graduating in '87 from West, hence the mispronunciation of the name.
1987?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, it's so exciting to see what our high schoolers have now. And, you know, even my kiddos that graduated from Northridge, it's just the progress that we've made as a district, as a community, and as our students, it's just, it's phenomenal. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have some more to go. No other comments, no other lights? Why don't we do a roll call? Ms. Crane, please.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haifle?
Aye.
Mr. Lydia?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Lovely. Well, thank you for participating in our School District Board of Education meeting. This meeting is adjourned.